There goes the power guides like what is that?
Can you hear me? Is the recording through this? Can y'all hear me over here? Hello, hello, hello. Okay, Aaron Rock. Is it loud? Can you guys hear this? Can you hear the microphone? Valley John Boy, hello, hello. Sue? Is the microphone on? Is it really loud? Yes, you can hear it. You can hear the microphone. Yeah, was that? All right, Deb. So Deb, you can hear the microphone. Everybody's saying yeah. All right, so I'm gonna clip it right here. Ooh. All right, so everybody hear the microphone, so I don't gotta really yell. Tell me what's going on. I'm a microphone, I'm mic'd up. Look at that. Just like the thumbnail says. So what's up everybody? Ossie Jen, Kathy, Debbie. Oops, oops, sorry, I just grabbed you guys actually. Ruth, Marge B. We can hear you, Louis says June. Says she can hear us. Jeff says yes, Christine. Elizabeth, yep, you can hear, you can hear. What about, can you hear me now? Can you hear me whispering, Lucy Lou? Lucy Lou, can you hear me whispering? Uh Cindy Wanda, what's up? Turd. Uh, is that it? Chris, what's going on? Greg, um, Chris from Boston. Oh, Boston's in the house, man, Boston. Oh, I see, y'all could hear me whispering. So yeah, um, I do have a mic. Just so everybody knows, I didn't realize, like, um, one, there was gonna be 5,000 people in the chat. We'll give it a few minutes. Um, but, um, so yeah, ultimately now, I'll have a microphone for the, um, and it's all thanks to LRG, actually, in the chat, that I have this microphone. So, um, Minnesota's in the house, badass rebel. Mary Lou Gordon, what's up? Mary Dale, Ronnie? Much better than that. Well, I thought I'd known. I guess that's probably why you do the like, the test ahead of time things, right? But you know me, I gotta do it all twice. Uh. Be sure to hit thumbs up, that's right. What's up Julie? Gina, hello? Guy, Tampa's in the house, what's up? There's Chris. Yeah, but so you know what you can do is actually, one of the viewers had mentioned it, you can go back and do a sound enhancer app. There's a sound enhancer app you can download. And you can, um, you can hear better. Somebody's coming down the road. They're working now at the tower, so. Indiana, Linda, what's up? So yeah, can you hear me? I go, the tower guys are cool, man, they're all just doing their old deuces. Everybody can hear. Look, now you can hear me here. So all of the subscribers that dumped me because they couldn't hear me? Well, too bad. Now you can. Now, if there's dyes on me, you send me back to normal, so just so everybody knows, and it won't be all the time. You'll see, you'll see in today's video, actually. So. Uh, Stephen, can you hear me? If we have something, that's weird. It depends on the device. It really does depend on the device that, um, you know, you're on. Uh, as to, as to how well you can hear. Like, right now, I'm not having to talk very loud. But I do get the microphone mic right here in my face. Is it even louder now? Rick with the $2 super chat. Appreciate you, Rick. Um, I know all kinds of things, actually. There's all kinds of awesome things that I'm not mentioning that are gonna be happening, just so everybody knows. Da 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 da. Eddie, what's up? If they dumped you for that, they don't deserve to be. Oh, I agree, I agree. I told you, I totally agree. I didn't want to embarrass my fans anyway. So. But I totally, I totally understood last night as far as like, you know, people jumping off because they couldn't hear. I just wish I would've known then that, uh, there was a sound enhancer apps. So guess what? You can go watch the video twice now. Get the sound enhancer app? And then go watch it again. And obviously Jeremy's video's gonna be a lot better, obviously. That's, that's what I always waited on anyway. I've always waited on Jeremy's videos. Uh, I'm hoping that, um, I'm hoping that it'll work out for Madam Mayor and Brett, uh, on this particular video. But, uh, as always, you can count on, uh, the numero uno, Jeremy Helzo. Oh, sorry, I keep grabbing the microphone right there. It's like clipped on at the end of the thing. There, I'll show you. I'll show you. See right there? Oh, it's only. Attention all passengers, please board, plane safely. Um, I should start doing some commentator. I should start telling stories. Like reading, I'm well, I can't do that because I can't read too well, but. What's going on? Well, um, yeah, so and that is one thing about it, there in the, in the, I mean, I can barely hear him, and I'm there in person. Um, just so you know. It's, um, it's one of the things where, um, you know. And I appreciate shout out to Debbie, like, um, last night, um, and I, I wish that's when it chimed in, I would, I would, uh, flipped her back on. Cause, uh, you know, again, with 5,000 people that are in the chat, you know, you had, you know, there's trolls, and everybody, and everybody in there just the sound, the sound, the sound, and you'll see like in today's video, like, I could, I could read, I could read what people were saying, but mostly I was just sitting there filming. And, uh, and then, uh, Flippa came up and discussed to me, says, hey, you know, the sound, I'm like, and what, what, what can I do? I didn't, I'm not gonna be the guy just to walk out the meeting to go get the microphone and come back, because I know why. Because I know Jeremy's filming, and you'll be able to watch it on his video, and it'd be a lot better than mine. But, um, for the most part, um, you know, I just did the best I can, but then come to find out, um, that there's a sound enhancer app. Ooh, gifted, uh, let's do that. Ossie Russo gifted five memberships, Russo. Aw, man. Look. I squeezed it and it went off. Okay, well, there you go. Do like that. I was probably really loud with you guys, huh? What's up Lucy? Uh, I just thought it was just me, maybe hit the thumbs up, and Trudy, Trudy. That's right, I can fix it though. I can fix almost everything. Mo Komo. It's awful to watch. What did you say? It's awful to watch all the whining. I can hear, yeah, well, you know, again, it depends on the device. But you, my thought, my thought was like, and again, that's the whole purpose of this chat, um, obviously you'll see the what the hell is today, and um, I'm sure he'll give you much more in detail as to everything that's going on that nobody could hear. But don't forget, you can go back and, uh, try this, the sound enhancer app. But, uh, you would think, I mean, in my opinion, just me personally, again, I know a lot of viewers out there, you know, are just chiming in, and it was very honest, you know, not knowing, just, hey, hey. But, um, at some point, when that was just going, and that was a whole entire chat, I would think, like, ah, I'll probably just say send that comment because he'll do it. Uh, $5 super chat, it's, uh, Jason, right on. Appreciate you, Jason. I'm gonna do that till I fix this thing. But, um, yeah, I would think to myself, like, eh, well, probably, I think he probably knows by now that, uh, well, nobody can hear anything. Um, I'm gonna sit down. A set change. We here, we are, uh, here at what the hell's news? We are, um, changing sets. Actually, the video today I'll be filming for tomorrow. Um, we gotta lower you. Uh-oh. There we go. Now you guys can see Tube Town behind me. Walmart has a shirt, I got my new two, a mayor shirts from Walmart. Well, luckily, I'm trying not to confuse myself, but this is what you're doing, Willis. Um, and so, uh, yeah, that was interesting, you know, I, I'm, I'll let, I'll let Jeremy do all the explaining on that, um, because again, he, he, that's all, that's all them, Madam Mayor and all them. Um, for me, I was the camera guy, but I, I did think it was kind of entertaining. But, uh, we'll, we'll save that for, uh, what the hell is video. I'm just more here to talk about how my sound was horrible. But that, that, see, now, that's the whole reason for the thumbnail. Now the Otter Creek Town Meeting saga is over because, one, um, you'll see in today's video, I'm sure with Jeremy, but in my video, a clip of Jeremy, that, um, um, sorry, I was distracted. That, um, the sound is fixed. Right? Because I'll have a microphone for the meeting. You guys can, um, have a little bit more of a, uh, sound. And then, two, it seems as if, well, the other guy decided to leave, yes, well, that, again, I'm guessing that's gonna be that, uh, there's really got, it's gonna be a town to start to thrive. And, uh, and Jeremy hit the nail on the head, uh, when I asked him in his, or in my video today, I'll just let you guys watch that after you watch his. But, um, I mean, he hit, and he hit the nail right on the head, which I'm sure he'll probably talk about in his video. And, uh, and so, yeah, but it was, it was good to see, um, you know, see some, um, some other good people from around the community there. It's good to see Joyce and Darlene and Gail. It's always good to see them, you know, good, uh, Belinda and Doug. It's funny, because, um, Doug's got a sling on, and Belinda's got a crutch on. I'm like, what are you guys doing? Practicing karate? You know what I mean? But, um, but yeah, as everybody knows, Belinda had hurt her ankle. Uh, I'm not, actually, I'm not sure what happened to Doug. We just started laughing about that, and, and, and I was talking about how, well, you smell something funny, it's me. Because I, I've been working, and, uh, you know, it's like sweat, and then, uh, I'm not sure the gentleman's name to sit next to him, but he's, he seems like a cool dude. He's like, you know how a man's supposed to smell? And I'm like, that's right. Uh. Hey, my thoughts was, you know, the good mojo comes in, the bad mojo goes out, and then it's just gonna thrive and grow, and they can, they can thrive as a town, they can, um, I think, watch this. Oh. Hit the basketball hoop. They could, uh, welcome to supporter smile club, Chris. They can thrive as a town, they can, um, decide if they want to continue as being incorporated town or unincorporated town. Um, so, that's, um, that's, oh, look at that, I could play games sitting right here on the live with you all. 517 people. What's up, bitches, Mikey? Uh, Viva, hello? Uh, I did great, I heard everything. Yeah, see, some people heard it just fine. But, um, but now we have, well, I've always said, again, shout out to LRG, my man. Caroline B. Oh, here we go. Every time you get super chat, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna shoot. Oh, got the chain, got the chain. But, um, LRG, thanks for the microphone, brother. Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, children of all ages. What's that? Chalice, I enjoy your video from the town meeting. Right on, Jackie Webb, we're going for another shot. Appreciate that. Oof. I don't clip you guys back up here. You guys can hear me fine right there, right? I ain't gotta yell. Is that good? Kevin Klein. That's right. Hit the like. That's right. Hit that like button. If you like, 500 people, man, the channel's growing, so we, we've, uh, 25,000, over 25,000, a lot of new subscribers. They're probably like, what's going on with this channel? Like, and then they see, they find Tube Town, so if you don't know, there's another YouTube channel called Tube Town that is all me as well, with different stuff. I've been demonetized by, um, YouTube twice now, because I confuse the robots. And like, actually, I'm very proud of that. Who else can say you can confuse AI? This guy can. All right. Uh, yeah, the, the other people there, listen, I, I appreciate if everybody just don't call people names and stuff like that, like, that's all, that's, you know, my channel's not about any of that or any of that stuff. I don't talk about other people's, um, you know, I just, I, again, I, um, I'm, I'm just here to have fun and smile and, you know, not, not discuss, again, politics and I'd be more than happy to do that stuff off camera, you know what I mean? Uh, as long as somebody's willing and able to discuss and have a civil conversation. But other than that, you know, you get, it's kind of a crazy world out there now, and people start to just, they can't have a discussion anymore. They gotta, you know, holler back and forth, like, I can't hear you, I can't hear you. Get it? I'm throwing one for myself on that one. Ooh. But, um, yeah, uh, I'll just, I'm just kidding for all the new subscribers out there who were complaining about that. Again, as you learn my channel, you'll see that we're just here to have fun, smile, and you come here and it's just about having fun, man. And, uh, my, my goal in life is to change the world, and I told Julie the other day, I was like, you know, baby, I'm doing it. I might have said this to my chat, because I do a lot of lives on different things and a lot of different videos, and, but, um, I was like, I'm, I'm able to do what I want to do, and I want to change the world by, you know, one smile, it's like, people being happy. And, uh, and I got a worldwide audience, and a lot of them are smiling, and you know, there are some that don't like me, but that's all good, you can't, can't win them all, right? But, um, but I'm doing it, you know, and that's, that's, you know, that's almost as good, like, it's actually probably better than At Risk Youth, excited. Another one of my dreams was to, uh, make an At Risk Youth Foundation for underprivileged kids. So that, um, you, you give kids that don't have a lot, uh, an opportunity to do something, uh, same thing with kids, you know, that, um, you know, might be going on the wrong track, and I, I promise you, there's several of them that I've met in my lifetime through my professional career as a motorcycle rider, that, uh, we were able to, you know, turn, turn the direction of, of where they were going, so. Uh, I, I'm trying to read there real quick. And, uh, Roxanne, I wasn't mad that you couldn't hear, I just really like listening to you guys. Yeah, I know, and I, I know that, again, don't get me wrong. Sorry. Um, don't get me wrong, but I know a lot of people just, just honestly, um, genuinely saying, hey, we can't hear, we can't hear. But you gotta remember, you know, my chats, I, most I've ever had a chat before was like 700, and I was just here recently. And other than that, like, it's maybe around 200, and now we have 5,000. And, um, and so, and like I said, uh, again, shout out to, uh, Diana, and I know, and I, I mentioned this in my video today, and I apologize, but I didn't apologize to the, uh, about the, uh, monitors, I apologize to the people who took offense to them, because, you know, they're, they're doing what they were doing. Uh, I, um, you know, I just, I thought it was just funny, some of this stuff. But, um, but yeah, that's, that's what we're here to do, we're here to laugh, and have fun. Hopefully, and don't forget, we do have a, a video coming out tonight. And I'm not sure if I use the moment ringing notification things, but, um, so, 6:30 tonight, there will be a video coming out, and it's, uh, you'll see Jeremy, you'll see George, you'll see Diana, you'll see the town meeting. Again, just a little bit before, and a little bit after. Uh, but you'll basically get to see the remainder of me and Diana cleaning up the ranch. So, um, and man, it looks good. Hey, from Lucas County, Ohio, you did great, so did the mods. Right on, Heidi, appreciate that. Uh, howdy, brother, what's up? Ireland calling, right up, Eddie, Eddie and Ireland, Ireland, Eddie? I can't, again, I'm not on my computer. Oh, I wonder if I could get my computer and put the hotspot, oh, if I do it up, I go off this, so. See, I should've got my computer, man, see, I'll get better the more I do this. I should've got my computer, turn my hotspot on, put my computer right here where I can read the chat more. One day I'll be a real YouTuber. Shoot for that one. Nope. Oh, right on, Jim, so everybody jumping in. This, this was, one of the viewers said, they did this. Uh, and I, I don't remember which one, it might've been a few, but I really appreciate it. I've been saying, I've been just, uh, repeating it in the chat that, uh, there's a sound enhancer app that you can purchase, or not purchase, but maybe download. I'm not sure if you have to purchase or not, there might be several different kinds. But evidently there is a, um, sub, what do you call it? A sound enhancer app. You guys can go download after this live, then you can go re-watch the town hall meeting, then you can watch Jeremy's meeting, oh no, yeah, Jeremy's meeting, then you can watch our meeting, because I think Madam Mayor and them said they're gonna try, there's a Friday. I don't know, but I, I, you know, I hope that, um, it works out. Even from Lancashire, United Kingdom, see, I told you, we're changing the world, once, changing the planet, I mean, excuse me. Check one, two, check one, two. Anthony Powell, what's up, Anthony, my man? Anthony's got a fun channel. Um, what, what was, um, your sound is breaking up? Well, see, that's the problem with these microphones. Because next thing you know, it's not gonna work. Sound's crackling. All right, I'll leave the microphone alone. Okay, see? See what's going on with the microphone? Now what happens when that happens? And you're in the middle of doing a whole video? You see? And now another thing you guys can't see is a big giant block stuck on the side of my phone. Um, like, you guys always fall over. That snaps off of my port. Then I'm, then I'm kind of like, that was probably crackly because I was holding it. So we're back to being good, good deal. You send Bad Ducky, um, I don't, I think scratching. I've, I've been trying to read, sorry. 583, man, let's get to 1,000. I didn't, again, I didn't do a, uh, notification thing because I, I, um, I want to save the ringing ding thing for the last. Because I think YouTube only gives you like three notices a day. Yeah, that, oh, that's what I was saying earlier, Selena, thanks for, um, reminding me. Zim does talk quiet. It's hard enough for me to, um, listen or hear him in there when you're in there. But I will, I actually, I, I mentioned to, uh, you know, on a personal note, a, a, after the meeting, I mentioned to Belinda and Doug, I was like, hey, if you guys, you know, needing help over there because they're, they're injured right now, to let me know that I'd be more than happy, uh, to go over there and, uh, and help them out, but, um, but same time, just wait, just wait. I'm, again, I'm not, I'm not saying nothing about what's about to go down. Because honestly, I totally forgot about it, thank goodness, uh, Jeremy called me, just wanted to text him, then, uh, it reminded me. Because I done set something else up and all this other stuff, but, um, yeah, you guys are, I mean, you guys are just get excited. Look, watch this, I'm gonna make this, and I'm not even gonna look. Ooh, not quite. So look at that, Tube Town's so interactive, you can sit there and play games with me on the live. 592, 600, we're getting to 600, we're doing it. Call them virtual council members. No, that's a thing, we're like, uh, like I said, I didn't realize I was gonna do like that, so, um, that's why, that's where, like, everybody in the, um, in the chat is kind of hails nation, if you will, and, and Debbie is in a sense too, because you'll see Debbie in, in quite a few of Jeremy's videos, you know, she's, she's kind of like, you know, one of the, one of the staples in the sense of, um, and then also, also, Deanna asked, you know, Diana needed help last night with it, so therefore, um, and I was like, yes, I, I did notice, absolutely. But, uh, another, another great moderator is, is, uh, the stats. So, uh, like, if I'd have seen her pop up, I would, I would have turned her on so that she could have helped with any of the negativity as well. But, um, what's up, Mary Cash from Houston? Finland, man, we got Kentucky. Ellie loves the videos, awesome, I appreciate it. I'm glad you guys all like the videos because, um, 620, 635, because I'm, I'm trying hard, like, we just, okay, so, and there's a lot of things happening, actually. We got a microphone, one. Two, uh, well, we had a microphone, I just actually started using it again. But we, we, uh, took over 25,000 on two, on, uh, on this channel. We're over, I think we're almost 7,000, or over 7,000 now on Tube Town, going for 10, so if you're not subscribed to Tube Town, jump over there and subscribe to Tube Town for me. But, um, this, it happened today. Uh, we got the, um, the deposit, so another big, big, uh, goal of mine was, it was, this was the first month, as I talked about before, that I was able to can to do YouTube 100% full-time and, uh, and be able to support the family as well as Julia. Well, that is the family, obviously, but, you know, cover, cover the bills. On top of that, you know, the other few necessities after the bills, so, uh, we are growing, we are gaining. We're on track to do it again, and maybe even a little bit better, the more I put content out there, but that's where I, um, you know, I like having fun with the videos, and when you guys watching them, that, that's, that's what really helps me, so here's to you guys watching the videos. Ah! Do you see it? You see, you seen it, it hit it. What's up, hey, ow! Ow, man. Dang horsefly got me. That wasn't a yellow one. It went in it, but it went out. Actually, uh, Ty was at the meeting last night, he's in the chat, he's, actually, Ty's the one who donated the, this whole setup. He's actually, he's, he's into the frisbee golf stuff. Never know, am I gonna do a frisbee golf video one day? He said, I just want to see the key. That could be fun. Uh, $2 super chat from Charles. I guess I didn't fix it. Uh, appreciate that, thank you, thank you. Oh, wait, no, I forgot, I gotta throw. Ooh, look, see the bowling pins on top? Almost knocked them off. Appreciate you, Charles. And was that, uh, what did Charles say? Love what you do in Texas, right on. Love you back. Um, your sound is fine here. Yeah, well, I got a microphone now. I got a ma, I, I got a microphone on, I don't want to touch it because I already almost broke it during this live, so. Um, we're not gonna do that. Um, the, the yellow flies, man, I need to get some skins off. Uh, do you, Omar, radio TV still cracking me up less now? Yeah, um, I, I wasn't able to read at all. I gotta get this guy, he's, he's getting me. Luckily, I like getting tattoos, so sometimes it stings, don't bother me that bad. What happens when I bite like four or five times in one spot, man, I gotta itch it, and then I scratch, like a, like a raw spot on my leg. Trudy sends this price, who is Matt? Oh, that's a good question. Yeah, so I'll talk about that. Oh, I think I got him. That was kind of Peggy, $4.99 super chat, or Ninja Puppy, sorry. I don't know where I got Peggy's, because I can't read that well. Keep up the great work, and thanks for using your microphone. Will do, man. Not sure I'm gonna use my microphone all the time, but I'll try. I'll, I'll try better. Just know, like, if, well, I guess you guys know, if the microphone goes out in a video, well, then you're not getting no more microphone in the video. But, uh, maybe I'll just leave it on the phone, and when you guys fall over and break, I'll blame it on you. So, appreciate you, Ninja Puppy, 100%, Jenny B. That's just the best medicine, Sharon says, and I agree. I so wholeheartedly agree. I'm so old hat, if you don't have anything good to say, don't say nothing at all, right? What happened to Belinda? I believe she, she, um, maybe was stepping down out of her shed. I don't want to, uh, say exactly what happened, because I don't know. Uh, it's much better than last night because I have a microphone. I have a microphone now. Hello, test one, two. Look, I just blew it, all you guys is here. One for that one. Oh, whoa, I'm going way back. Well, I should go for the bucket back there. The, oh yeah, back to the masked person. Um, I don't know who that was, it was kind of weird. Dude just come in like full on, like, like he's back in the wild, wild west. He's like, this, this is gonna be my, this will be me today for him. Maybe he watches the videos, maybe he wanted to be on the video. It was Rust's, it was Rust's spy, but like, I don't get it, like Rust could watch the live, even though he couldn't hear it, unless he got the sound enhancer lap, lap, uh, app. But, uh, there's really no need to spy. I mean, Don had already left, right? Didn't that guy leave already? I should have followed him out, is what I should have did. Huh, like Mr. Don. Again, I, I, again, like I said, I'm not there to antagonize him, but, um, I, I'm not, it's not my, not my dog in the fight, and the ninja warrior. Hey, one of my good friends is a ninja warrior. He's a dirt bike ninja. He's never made it to Mount Midoriami though. He's actually, um, just did his first, um, backflip to an airbag. Okay, it's getting hot, sorry. What's up, everybody? 748 people in the chat. We had, uh, yeah, I was pretty pumped to see, um, uh, I didn't think I was gonna get that many people in the chat last night. But, uh, when it, when it came down with everybody, you didn't want to deal with the, the stuff up, what is that? I'm in a wheelchair, so, but yeah, so yeah, exactly, that's what I'm saying, Anthony, Anthony is in a wheelchair, and he has a silver old palsy, I'm not, I know I say Anthony. But he's, he's an awesome fan of the channel, I'm a fan of his, sometimes, I'll go on his live sometimes and just chat with him. Um, bear in mind, it, it takes him a few minutes to, 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 to type and get stuff out, but, uh, yeah, um, he, he's an awesome, he's an awesome guy, and, uh, it's cool to have, uh, fans like him and you all as well, but, um, so, this one's it, man, I'm getting horrible, I'm going further and further in the woods, I'm gonna lose them all. But yeah, we are back with a mic. Um, yeah, again, like, like I said earlier, you know, I'm not into calling people names and stuff like that, that's, that's not, we're not here to do that, we're not, you know. So, it's, you know, it's one of those things where I'm, I'm just here to have fun, I'm not here to, you know, I'm here to try and be louder. Ah, and get that darn yellow fly. 762, 772, yeah, we have 772 people in the chat. Oh, look, I look like I'm at the circus. I'm the hula hoops. Um, and so, again, I don't know how all that works out. That will be for Jeremy's video, for him to explain to you all as to any and everything that goes on with the meeting. I was here to talk about the saga that's over with me, and that is the microphone. So if you're just joining the chat, thanks for jumping on the what you're doing, Willis, um, uh, YouTube show. Now I have a microphone. Sorry, y'all, I got it in that, not sure that is. Um, but now, now I'm like the other YouTubers, or, uh, tubers with the thing up front. Hello, can you hear me? Appreciate it, Becky. Yeah, so I tried my best. Um, remember, if anybody gives a membership, please let me know, because I can't see them on here. I could throw axes from here, too. Stop shouting, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that, Gail. Kevin Klein. Melina's listening. Very windy. What did I say? Chalice, I remember when you got excited about 200 people in the chat, I know. Well, I kind of knew, like, I knew a lot of the chat would be, like, ex, um, a lot of people that were just there for that, they weren't really there, but hopefully I gained, I did gain like 1,000 subscribers, which is cool, so hopefully, uh, the channel will, will get some more, get some more momentum going there as well, but, um, you know, I know a lot of people there just to see the drama, and then once there was no drama, 2,000 people, well, they couldn't hear either, but, you know, I got a feeling, my personal opinion, like, like you'll hear Jeremy say, I'm sure, I know you'll hear him say in my video, that, um, you know, it's like, at this point in time, in my opinion, like, it was, I've been to a lot of town meetings, it was the first time I've ever been to OC's town meeting, but I've been to a lot of town meetings in my own town, and they're, 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 you know, they're, they're boring. They're not that exciting unless you have the interest in what's going on. Now, I keep in mind, the interest of being the town, that's why I feel that I'm guilty, I haven't been to a town meeting in a bit, but I, I used to be at the town meetings all the time, and I'd be the only one there. But the city manager, the mayor, the vice mayor, all the council, I mean, I, I know them all, I see them all, we know them all by first name basis. Actually, one of the former mayors asked me if I'd run for mayor, literally, and to God. Um, but, uh, but I, I said no because of the fact that I was traveling a lot of the time with my shows, and it wouldn't be fair to the people to not be there as a mayor. And that, and I just thought of that, that's pretty funny. So. Um, but yeah, what's going on at Tube Town today, man? Tube Town's being tore down, unfortunately. It's funny, the resident council passed a motion to vote to technically actually smart on it for two more years. Tube Town, baby, that's right, right on, appreciate you. Yeah, so again, if you, if you were on the live last night and you couldn't hear, try, somebody else, if y'all could back me up in there, let me know. Um, somebody else let me know that, uh, if you're able to get that sound enhancer app, and if it worked to help better hear the, the live, because then you can go listen to it after this. And then don't forget, Jeremy, Jeremy, I, I don't know what Madam Mayor and them are posting there. That's what I thought the base that they're gonna try, but with reception and everything. Um, so I don't know, but uh, but obviously, you know, Jeremy, he's gonna be there five thirty today. You know, I'm gonna be there at six thirty and um, and so. There we go. You can't say that. That's not, that's not nice. Look at that. Can't say nothing nice. Like I, I moderated your butt. I just had to remove the comment. Now you better watch out. You know, you'll get a, you'll get the old, the meme. I got meme mods. Ooh. I had to actually erase a comment today. Maybe two. But I was probably, I think it was the same person actually, talking about the mods are mean or whatever. Oh, can you hear the weed eater? Why is Tube Town being taken down? Well, Bonnie, I guess you just got to stay tuned after the town meeting last night. Um. So Don, again, so I, again, I don't know, as far as the saga that I'm here talking about, the only saga that I know about is the saga that I fixed. And here's gonna be crackling. Check one, two, check one, two. Hello, boys and girls. Welcome to the Tube Town channel. No, excuse me, I'm messing with AI again. This is the What You Doing Willis show. Thank you for joining us. Please leave a comment. Can y'all hear me now? What about now? Can you hear me now? Alright, I'm gonna leave it alone now. I can't hear anything. Yeah, because I was, flags are back. Yeah, they're gonna be better. So I got some, actually, I got some Tube Town fan mail. Julie says I should save it for the next live. I need to, I need to set up a um, a different live for Tube Town mail, but then again, it's sometimes it's hard to distinguish, so I might just say, keep it at um, keep it on the Tuesdays, because we do got a lot more of fan mail, but I do wanna take the American flag up higher, size of, about the American flag up in there. It sounds freaky. Uh, and then a Florida flag, then the Tube Town flag, then have two spots underneath it for flags that um, maybe we will um, do like auction off a, a, a spot for a month or uh, you know, that way it's not a permanent thing and everybody will be able to get to be involved. Ha, ha, yeah. There we go. This is, this is from a man, Jeremy. He's in the chat. What the hell? Oh. So close. Jeremy, look at that. So here in Tube Town. Tube down, tube down. I, I did the microphone. See, you see what I did, Jeremy? I solved the Tube Town, the Otter Creek Town Meeting saga of everybody not being able to hear. I fixed the saga. So that's what we're here to discuss. We're here talking about that. I tell you, everybody, um, I'm, I'm actually, I'm excited for your video just because uh, one, I couldn't really hear anyway, but I was just uh, doing cameraman, like going back and forth. But um, just as, you know, again, I've always enjoyed the way Jeremy explains it, um, the different things. If it's from, you know, storage units, treasure hunting, everything, again, like I've always said, Jeremy's good at, you know, just captivating me, you know, me personally. So um, it, that's why I, I enjoyed watching his videos. So um, that's why we, we don't, if you guys are in the chat talking about the saga, wondering about the Don leaving and all that, I don't know. I have no idea. I don't know if, if he left, if that was illegal or, no, I think it was. Jeremy said it was illegal, but as to all the specifics, details of that, but, 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 I don't know. I have no idea. So five thirty, what the hell is, you'll find all out. Oh, that's two of them. Eight hundred and twenty-three people, man. Let's get to a thousand on just this. We got um, we got uh, yeah, we got, so we got a thousand new subscribers last night or yesterday, since yesterday, a little over, I think. But again, don't forget Tube Town. Um, and if my meme mods, um, you know, offended everybody last night, like I said, sorry they offended you. Well, no, I'll leave that for my video today. You'll, you'll see that. You'll see my, you'll see how much, how fun I have, how much fun I have with this microphone and my video today. Um. And the video today is again, a little bit of a, uh, mashup. And then so you guys get to see the finish in the ranch there, getting all looking good. And um, and then um, before the, the meeting and then after the meeting. And then um, and then you'll get to have my little uh, talk with you guys with the microphone. Ha, ha, ha. Uh, right, I appreciate it. No, I know. No, again, that was, well, you know, it is, Jeremy, he'll tell you, you know, it's, it's, it's ninety-nine percent, there's always that one percent, that five percent of people that are there just to antagonize and because they're bitter and because they're unhappy with themselves and their situation, everything. What makes them feel happy is being mean and saying things that are, you know, bad about people or whatever. So uh, it's, it's unfortunate, but unfortunately, there are people that are like that. They're out there. Hopefully, maybe there'll be one out there that was like that, that I could change. It would be willing to come up and say, you know what? I used to be that way. I started watching your channel and you maybe, you, you gave me a different outlook on life and you maybe think to myself, man, I should enjoy each day that I get and, 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 and be happy for, for other people and their success. And uh, and then watch how the light changes. Watch how God works for you and watch how your life becomes so much better. And that'd be awesome to see if that really happened and, and I'm, I'm gonna strive to do that. So if you are out there and you're thinking about it, keep thinking about it. Email me if you wanna do it in private and I can talk about it through the um, through the thing, or if you actually wanna talk about it. Heck, I'd be willing to, it's within reason. I'd be willing to uh, you know, to do a video with you if I could, if I, you know, if it was close enough. See what Deanna did right there? I just noticed that. She was trying to pull that up yesterday by her hands. Yeah, well, yeah, my channel have my, well, I had my, yeah, Flippin' and Jessica, but they were there. I, I, again, I don't really expect them to do anything, honestly, but um, but now as the channel grows, we'll need them for, again, that five percent of people I was just talking about. Uh, but that's what's so awesome about it. Um, the majority of everybody is super awesome and fun and you're not here, you're here for the good time. Uh, I'm gonna, it says Jenny B's gonna be a pay that. Jenny B are awesome. Those didn't even know you were filming last night to help everybody. There was always. Oh yeah, I gotta remember to not to read everything. Um, yeah, there are W Downers. That's another thing I gotta remember not to read. Oh, we got a super chat there. What is that? Charles, pray, don't worry, be happy. That's right, Charles. I'm about to go pick them all up from my new super chats. I have any more clothes? I have two right there. But um, appreciate that, Dave. But yeah, we are entertaining content. Love it. Yep, awesome. Yeah, well, there I go, doing it again, reading it before I read it. It's kinda hard for me though, because um, I'm gonna, love all the antics. Okay, I gotta be down quick. Thank you. Probably should go get a water and a, and a sweat towel. Yeah, something about that. Stay tuned for the um, I know Caroline. I should, well, I had, well, I will in the chat when uh, the next super chat comes. It's back to see the original, all the people who've been in the channel from the beginning when I did lives on the, now this channel. Me and Julie were doing Tuesday lives and I randomly went live on this channel. They just would talk about the saga of the mic. Um, but I, I had a set of drums in the back and I felt like I had to work for the super chats because people were donating money for our, for me building the cabin and, and it turned into the cottage. And so I uh, I'd run and um, do the drums and come back, but now I need to run to get um, more rings. It's much funner just to toss a ring. Yeah, and maybe, maybe the town hall, maybe um, Belinda, that, you know, that, I'd be more well, happy. I know, well, again, I'm not gonna give out too many clues because I don't wanna, I don't wanna necessarily give up content that could, um, the others, because Tube Town is for the creators of YouTube channels and YouTube creators coming here, creating content is what it's about. And in this whole town from that end where the ranch is to that end, where the schoolhouse is to where this is. The whole entire world knows of this town because of YouTube. Um, and so therefore, there's, there's things that are happening, right? Right around the corner and I'm just gonna keep a zip lip for now and just let you guys enjoy the content that's going to be coming because, uh, sorry, you're shaking because I'm moving on this table. Um, because there are, um, what's up TJ? There are um, things happening and content ideas that I have for other channels that possibly could do. I'm sure Jeremy does as well and that's what's so awesome about it. We all just get to, you know, have fun being big giant adult kids. Hello, Kelly. What's up? How are you and Dave? Good to see ya. I didn't know you guys were all the way in Pennsylvania. I thought you guys were in Orlando. Um, Bruce says maybe he'll be moving to Tube Town. Well, don't worry, man. There, there's gonna be a point when my RV's off of, uh, well, I hope not, but at the same time, I'm sure there will be, but then um, I might bring an RV here and I might auction off a Tube Town experience. I'll talk with Jeremy and then they will donate some money somehow and uh, obviously I probably use some money to pay the the uh, RV payment that month, but uh, do something to donate back and, you know, to help out, but um, that's down the way. It will then be a town of two. Well, nope. It's all, it's always a town in a tiny town in the middle of nowhere, population of one. And that's the mayor. That's this guy. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that PJ. Yeah, they should get the mics back up and going. Maybe they will. I'm not sure. We'll see. Stay tuned. But my mic is going. You guys can hear me a little bit better now. Check one, two, check one, two. Jimmy Iowa in the house. Jimmy Flat Earth Iowa's in the house. Alright. Aloha from Hawaii. Cynthia, Trevor, what's up? Cornwall, UK. I definitely get a drink. So here's, here's my thoughts on the, the town meetings um, that are going to be in the future. My, my feeling is it's gonna be the actual town people who care about the town coming together. We, we have it lately, actually. I saw that. Town coming together and uh, people starting to actually help and, and ultimately it won't, here, here, let me just put it to you this way. The entertainment's gonna turn right here to Tube Town, baby. Okay? Because it's not gonna be over there at, at um, Town Hall anymore. It's just gonna be a town taking care of town business, which think about how many towns are out there. You guys want an exciting town to follow? I'm sure there's more out there. The excitement's right here at Tube Town. So that's why I gotta be sure, one, to be subscribed to Tube Town. Two, um, honestly, I, I'll, um, as for Brent and Trista, you know, I'll do, I'll still do for them. Like I, I told before, I'll go record the town meetings for them, for their interest in, in what's going on here in the community. But other than that, um, you know, that, that's my thoughts. It's all gonna dwindle off into where it's, it's, you know, you guys aren't gonna be bitten. Us, enjoy the good work for us. Alright, Robin, two dollars. Appreciate it. I gotta go. I'll be right back. Actually, I got a couple of new ones that Ty brought. Over in the truck. Alright, here, you guys hold on for one minute. Oops, sorry, I didn't mean to grab you. You gotta remember that. The microphone messes me up. Alright, I'll be right back. Can you still hear me when I'm over here? I guess if I took the microphone with me. Oh, you know, that's, that's what I'll do next time. A better sound because we have a microphone. Check one, two, check one, two. Um, I had a microphone. Yeah, shout out to LRG. LRG's in the chat. It was in the chat. So um, we have a microphone. Um, but yeah, I had to get a drink and some, so now, oh, I gotta get the super chat for, oh, that's a new one. Uh, Michael Russo, would you get the five? So this is for the first one. Oh, and it's here. And this is for Michael Russo, get your five memberships. Thanks for letting me know, Gracie. Oh, drop, drop just a little bit. So again, if you're, if you watched last time, you couldn't hear, here's where it gets to be awesome. You can download the sound enhancer app, app, and then you can go watch it again on my channel. And then think about it. You watch it twice. It's like I do everything twice. You get to watch it twice. What's up, David? Um. Was it? Okay, uh, Michelle, sorry, Michelle. Well, you guys know me. I'm, I'm horrible at reading. I'm, oops, sorry, grabbed you again. Uh, you guys know that I'm, sorry, the lighting's bad. Um, I, I don't know. Send them, I'm, I'm keeping an eye on Jeremy's video tonight. I'm sure that's will be um, he'll explain it all, because he'll, he'll, he knows it all as far as what's been going on. You gotta pay for that? Okay. Well, the chai section is a free one. There might be some free ones out there. I didn't, I don't know. But um, or you can just wait till Jeremy's video comes out. Again, you can watch them both because his video actually be more informative. Mine's just, you guys just watch the town meeting, which to me, that's always been like boring. But teaches, well, I guess not when, before, but now. Because when I was there, like I said, it was just the very beginning when that stuff happened. After that, it was just a regular town meeting. I don't know if it's called sound enhancer, Roy. Uh, that's just what somebody in the comments had mentioned. And so that's what I've been telling people, is to, to jump on, to look for that. Um, that's all I can say. Can't wait to see Jeremy's video. It's not, yeah. For sure. A lot of people are uh, patiently waiting. Did, 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 I thought, uh, she might go set up. It seems to be working fine. Yeah, well, right on, LRG, man. Um. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Justice Clowns. I'm, I'm, I missed a lot of chat. I'm sorry. So there I go. Uh, well, I don't want to put them all to the show. Oh yeah, forty-four minutes, fifteen minutes. Yeah. Need yard darts. Yeah, I need some real ones. I want the real ones. I want, we got the kids hatchet throwing game, but I want, okay, let's have a picture here. Hold on. I want to um, I wanna get a real one too. Anybody knows, like, I haven't seen a real one that you can buy. How many new people are in here? There's, there's obviously a lot more people than normal. We have seven hundred and seventy-nine people. Uh, if you're new, uh, say, you, you just type one and say, yeah, or just type one. So we know. Have you been working on your accepted speech as mayor of Tube Town? Well, I'm trying to figure out when uh, I can let the um, the actual owner of Tube Town, which is Jeremy. Uh, my thoughts were whenever Jeremy's allowed a property, we have a task, support a smile club. Appreciate you, Taz. Oh, man, I gotta go. Hi, I gotta go for the bowling pins. But um, I think that's probably when we'll do it. But um, there are major, major Cliff, what's up Cliff? Thanks, thanks for joining, man. Appreciate it. Uh, we got lots of videos. There's uh, Play Mud, Play Mud Outdoor, Play Mud Outdoors. Sweet, I love that. Dale, what's up, man? Appreciate you jumping on. I hope you enjoyed the channel. It's just all about me and my good self and um, I'm a professional dirt bike rider. Uh, work at the, we have the track with the largest amateur motocross race. I do have a lot of stuff doing dirt bikes and then now the more I get to build Tube Town, the more fun that comes here. Uh, who else was that? Uh, Flo, alright, sweet. What's up? Been following South Carolina for a while though. Right on, yeah. There's Lady Man. May, may, okay, just everybody knows. I can't read very well. And this goes real fast on my phone, so just bear with me. Angie, what's up? Angie. Yeah, oh, is that, that was Angie and Rick, right? Yeah, Angie and Rick's Family Adventures. They were the first sticker on the mailbox. Actually, she gave me a stick at, oh, Christmas in the Creek and then I had it. I still had it. And then uh, so if you're a YouTuber and you wanna put your, you can send it, one, you can send your sticker to me. Uh, two, you can, if you come by. Actually, there was a new surprise in the mailbox yesterday that um, you saw yesterday's live that uh, that had already been gotten by um, somebody. So, so I have, I had, I had the Tube Town turtles. We have Tube Town flags. Uh, we have a very custom Tube Town flag. I might only have like four of them left that Vicky sent. I might do something with those. Um, something special with those, because then we have um, it was Peter, I believe from Jamaica, New York, sent a bunch of Tube, little Tube Town flags and they're just the coolest things ever. And so those are gonna be prizes here, uh, you can win at Tube Town um, by stopping by, getting yourself a What You Doing Willis sticker. Need a Tube Town anthem, right? Uh, right on Grandma Patty. Yep. Yeah, and there's a lot of people out there that, that don't chat a lot and some people watch on the TV and can't necessarily chat. Yep, Jimmy, so the mic is working. It is working. Look. One, two, one, two. One, two, one, two. Peer pressure. New to Tube Town, right on. Yeah, so don't forget, um, I have two channels. Basically, the way it works is um, I started, just forget, since we got a lot of new people on here, go and kinda give you a quick little rundown. I started What You Doing Willis, uh, when Jeremy suggested, hey, you should start a YouTube channel. Um, and I'll stop saying them as much. I try. But I um, it didn't work too well, did it? Second word out of my mouth. But I do What You Doing Willis is whatever I'm doing. If I'm at my freestyle motocross shows, if I'm working on a friend's house, if I'm, I'm actually gonna be putting a roof on Miss Kay's place, out on the jobs, out on my shows, working at the track. If you go back, you see, there's a whole ton of different videos, all different stuff what I'm doing. Um, Tube Town started, my, my wife had a channel for a while. It was called um, What You Cooking, Julia? But she, it just, you know, it was just a little bit too difficult for her to keep doing that and then all the food that we have. But um, so I took that channel and I asked Jeremy, I said, man, should I, should I, should I use this? And he's like, yeah, definitely, because it's a monetized channel. So I turned that into Tube Town. Now, the way it works is I, I post Tube Town content on Tuesdays at three o'clock because I do go live on What You Doing Willis at six thirty. And then I post Tube Town at six thirty on Saturday because I go live at twelve o'clock on What You Doing Willis. So those are the two Tube Town videos and then I do a bunch of Tube Town lives. Usually I don't do a bunch of What You Doing Willis lives. It's just Tuesday nights. I just did this one because of uh, I had to let everybody know I fixed the saga in Otter Creek Town Meeting. I get the microphone. Look, I can talk like this. Can you guys hear me right now? Um. Pat Rose. Oh, there's a, I don't know that, uh, wording, but it's in a foreign language. So Angie, you guys let me know when, next time we got a race, if you guys wanna, if, if, you know, let me talk about the track. I know a guy that knows a guy that knows a guy. Maybe I can work on a version. Um. Yeah, I mean, everybody, you all can, I'll be, I'll be perfectly honest with you. I, I, I mean, I can't, like JK is ultimately, like, when I get big enough, like I've never even spoken to JK in person. I've only talked to him through text and email, but like he will, he will be my, he will be my full-time, like, producer guy if I ever got to that point where I was that way. Uh, it'd be good to be able, because like, just like Jeremy says, he's Uh, it'd be good to be able, because like, just like Jeremy says, he said, Jeremy's probably back to filming right now, but um. You know, he's like our alter ego, and he 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 just hits the nail on the head on so many different things that. I I I don't think I could get it any better myself, to be honest with you. So um, like, you know, he does stuff, but but feel free with Zilla, um. Right? I mean, you guys all could. I mean, Tube Town is the world. You know, it's the whole planet, I should say. And the more you guys send, the more we can do, the more we have fun. Uh, get ready for some good times tomorrow. No, the next day. Which day is it? Whatever, when I filmed yesterday to post tomorrow, or however I do it. Yeah, J K is awesome, you know. Yeah, if you're not subscribed, definitely subscribe to J K's. He always has some fun stuff. Um, so J K makes me laugh, like like thankfully I get to make you guys all laugh. Uh, J K makes me laugh. Now, some of J K's videos, I mean, again, I can't watch them all. I mostly watch the ones he he does of me. Um, and then sometimes I'll make some of me and Jeremy and then of the saga and like it's just, he's got a very creative mind, so um. It's it's awesome fun. I guess I should uh. One, one day I'll get a clipboard and I could I could put the link in there. I could put J K's link up there. You guys could um, subscribe to his channel. So he's like part of, he's a moderator. Yeah, he's like part of the the what the hell's nation, if you will. And again, but going back to that, um, that that makes it easier for me to um. Just distinguish from like when Jeremy jumped in the chat, there's he's there he was because sometimes you go so fast, I couldn't see, but being is a blue name and um, I was able to notice it. Just have a good day. Work for sure, Carol. Almost eight hundred. We had eight hundred miller, actually, Charles. A little over. People had to come and go. People are working. I get it. And uh. And it's just random What You Doing Willis live. You know, so therefore, um, appreciate it, Angie. Yeah. The shows are a lot of fun. I hope so. That's the idea to have fun, laugh, and uh. You know, oh, yeah, definitely, um, Gracie, for sure. Yeah, anybody send prayers for anybody out there in the path, no doubt. Hey, I'm gonna walk over here. Let me. Okay. Oh, wait a minute. Let's do it this way. Look, further away I go from the phone, can you still hear me? I can't really see the chat, but. Checky, check, check, one, two. Checky, check, check, one, two. Look, see flipping? Oh, you know what that looks like? That looks like the finger. Flipping was that? Looks pretty dangerous, too, though. All right. Could y'all hear me? Who there? Sue says yes. Look at that. Again, don't get too excited with this microphone now. What I'll try and do is I'll try and just clamp it on my stand. Do you guys stay on your feet? Then uh, you guys don't fall over and uh, and you won't break it. Um, yep, everybody can hear. Good deal. Fifty three minutes in the chat. Yeah, so um, I today's video, I'll be uh, well, actually tomorrow's video, I'll be filming today, obviously, because I'm. I'm getting to be a real YouTuber now. And um, I'm filming it for today. Yeah, tiny chain goes on. Yeah, yeah, that would be cool eventually. A little four wheeler pulling some little uh. Um, like lawnmowers with chairs in them or something. Little lady on the push lawnmowers are set up like a chair, like the motor's off, it's like a lawn chair, hook them all together. And you get a lawnmower. I actually have a lawnmower. Gay Smash wants to buy it. Surprise, they're not on here. They might be all having fun, enjoying the sunshine. Zoe and Lauren are doing awesome. Cindy, thank you for asking. Uh, tried it. I I've done. So I did them. Well, watch today's video. So you got, again, you'll you'll be able to. One, if you want to download the app or pay for it or wherever or how it works, you can go do the sound enhancer, watch the live. Uh, two, Jeremy's videos are going to come out, which will give you be a lot more entertaining. I'm looking forward to that one as well. And then um, three, um. I don't think there is a three. Yeah, so. Yeah, it will. It will. Yes, definitely, um, the town will the town, the town will flourish uh, with the right people there. And and the good thing, and and honestly. The town should. The town deserves it. The town earned it. Um, because the town has been, you know, again, in the limelight of the world, the planet, excuse me. Um, for a long time and kind of in a negative light. And the good thing about it is, you know, and I'm not going to talk about the meeting because um, you can watch the live and again, you'll see Jeremy's video tonight. That um, and hopefully, again, Madam Mayor, they'll make theirs done. Um, they'll be able to make some use out of it as well. But the um. You know, like you're on a lot last night, actually, when Jeremy talking right here. But again, the way you dressed the boy, what you dressed them with at the end was, you know, I mean, it couldn't it couldn't be better. And um, you know, everybody, if if the town just continues to flourish and do good, then good things are going to happen. And with the negative not being there, then. Two thumbs up, right? Huts and Sisters are loved by all. Love seeing Joyce and Darlene. It's always good to see them. Can see Miss Gail in there. It was awesome. You guys, Miss Gail was there. Um, so. Uh, Roy, someone paid the taxes for, oh, um, I guess something about that. I'm not sure. All right, we'll see you, Melina. Seven hundred and thirty eight people. I don't have to do it. Seven hundred and thirty eight people. So everybody knows, we usually only have about two hundred people in the chat. And uh, that's like an average and sometimes even less. It was going too fast. I can't read it. Sorry, I bumped you guys. I've heard I've heard I've heard about it. They're doing good. Yeah, my guy, actually, um, I believe George was talking about they uh. Yeah, so yesterday I I we had the schoolhouse and Jeremy gets there and he goes straight for the snack pile. And this is all snacks and talking about these different snacks. And then I grew up and I get a butterscotch. And I haven't had a butterscotch since I was a kid. And I was like, oh, my God. So I ended up putting a pocketful in my pocket, a handful in my pocket. I was eating, I was eating on the way here, actually. But um. Yeah, as we get closer to winding the chat down, the um, Tube Town's coming down. Um, I'll kind of. Just just like the yellow flies are going to come down soon as they soon as I get them. That's what I'm here. But that that's tomorrow's video. You guys will get a uh. My screen is fuzzy or is it your eyes? Might be my screen, probably because I haven't cleaned it. Oh, and I put the screen protector on and it's kind of half over the lens on this side. Do you think? No, yeah, I don't know. I I'm again, all this stuff about, so if you're just jumping on, just join us. Uh, the Otter Creek Saga that I was talking about is over, and that was um, that was me and the microphone for the hearing. I imagine Jeremy's going to have a lot better explanation of of the saga and and give you guys a lot more details and have a lot more entertainment. Watching that than just the regular live, you know, um, because honestly, once. Once the little thing happened at the beginning, it was just a normal town meeting again. I'm going to get one of these before we leave. I got one, two, three, four, five, six left. And these are the putters from what um. I suppose. Oh, oh, he said do it like this. Well, that didn't work. Yeah, we don't uh. Yeah, I don't know who that guy was. Ah, the guy, the mysterious masked man. J K needs to make a video of that. Ah, keep grabbing you guys. Yeah, skin so soft. Yeah, so actually, I think Miss Gail. I wonder where they were at last night. Hope they're all right. They said they were going to come, actually. Um, yeah, so I got a microphone. Well, I had a microphone. Shout out to L R G. What's up, Alan? How long you guys want to hang out for? This is fun hanging out, like. Oh, long toss. All right. You guys are far back. I lost the chat. Oh, you know what? I never went to the live chat mode. Now I'm in live chat. Aim for the chair. All right, Linda, we'll go for the chair. Oh, I go for the chair and watch him making the other one. The drama has left the building. I believe so. I believe the town is on the on the way up. So guess where all the focus comes to, everybody? Tube Town. For all the fun's had. Oh, yeah, I don't know. Yeah, I mean, it's definitely hard in a building for sure. Building is definitely. Oh, this is the one that Ty, these are the two Ty brought last night. Um. I'd actually like to try and go play, but I'll probably end up losing a couple. Um. Oh, man. I've hit that thing three times. Madam Mayor's there posting today at four. There's Ty. What's up, dude? I was just talking about you. Um, okay, so the Madam Mayor, see, when I talked to uh, and they may may may, they may have posted a community post saying. Uh, I know that Brett said you were going to try, but I I I didn't think he said it for sure. Um, I thought he said Friday. But um, well, cool, then you'll get to see their their video as well. And hopefully they can they can hear better. Turned over twenty packets of gel. Oh, I know. He was talking about that. We were talking about that in the in the kitchen. And so if you just joined us, once again, going over the saga that Town Hall Meeting was effective, I decided to hook up the microphone that L R G sent a long time ago. And um, those yellow flies are bad. And so therefore. Um, I I don't know anything about all the people being banned or other people, you know, again, I I don't do that, so. Um, you don't have to ask because I don't know. All right, see, Ty, I haven't made one yet. I tried doing the putt thing, but I've been standing here like this, so. Ooh, I got the last one. Better. I can see clear now. Did you clean your glasses? Mine need to be cleaned, actually. It's nice not having to yell. But don't get too excited. Or yellow flies just eating me alive. Uh, no, I don't believe that guy was Russ. The masked man, I do not believe that was Russ. I'm sure he went to Bubba Q before going back to Ohio. Well, I'm pretty sure he's probably gone there a few times. Um, my next Tube Town video will be on what day is today? My next Tube Town video will be Saturday night. Now, the next video at Tube Town will probably be tomorrow. Will be tomorrow. It'll be on What You Doing Willis because. I got, you know, I film What You Doing Willis, and that's building Tube Town. Town in a tiny town in the middle of nowhere, population of one. Uh, Sean owes me fifty bucks. Travis Dunn, uh. Yeah, I don't. I don't. Again, okay, so yeah, I don't know, but where we at? Nine? How many likes we got? Nine hundred and twenty? Let's go to a thousand likes. Let's try to do a thousand likes for you in this chat. And then uh, and then um, lovely. All right, I have an amazing date. Uh. Um, Monica, De Monica. How do you say that? Oh, ten dollars. Don Gibson. Did you get your package yet? I'm not sure, Don. I did get some. He opened some packages uh, on the live yesterday. Let me go get some more. Yes, hold on. I did get some. Uh, I I'm just going to wait till Tuesday because I did open a few yesterday. Uh, L R G, I got yours, but I didn't show it. I'm going to use that in the video. But um, here's for the super chat. Yeah. Finally. Got that thing. Um, boom, sweet. Nailed it. Booney, nineteen dollar super chat. Tube Town, B and B is coming. That's right. Boom, two in a row. Look at that. Man. I'm confusing AI again. Yeah. How about the other day when I posted a Tube Town video and I put the What You Doing Willis intro on there? I was like, oh, no. Had to go ahead and delete it. So. Shaq would have missed that by a mile. That's funny. Well, at least I got a run far to get them for the next super chats, right? Get the super chats, get the basket. Yeah, well, that's right. I mean, I can't say that because I missed the basket. I can't get the super chat back. Um, better to go, better go play the Lotto. Yeah, I don't do that. You know, actually, I would do it once in a while because then that's how you actually win because if you won, because. The amount of money people um, put into Lotto, like, and when you do win, like, say, you've been playing Lotto for eight years and you won like twenty grand, like, oh, I won twenty grand. But you spent forty in the past eight years. Queen City Burgers and Fries Food Truck. Where you at, Queen City? All right, Queen City Burgers and Fries. What's up, Joanne from Ocala? Hi, Queen City. Ooh, on the chair. Did Jeremy need to visit? Jeremy has not been able to visit Tube Town yet. I'm sure Travis, Travis. I'm sure Jeremy will inform everybody. I said, what's going to be going on with him? Ah, man, yesterday cannot be a more perfect feeding example on yesterday's Tube Town live of how. It just happens. Like, I had no idea Jeremy was coming, was going to be there like after I started live. Next thing you know, I look up and he comes coming down the road. And I wasn't sure if, I mean, I knew he was coming to town, but I wasn't sure if you wanted people to know when he was in town just yet or not. So I picked up the camera. It was kind of like. Going with it around so that he you wouldn't see him in the background. And then next thing, next thing you know, he comes around a corner, Tube Town, baby. And uh, so I was like, all right, cool. Then he he's uh, let's go with being on the live. So um. But yeah, like you, you think we script that stuff. People think, oh, they scripted that. Not at all. Not at all. That's just, that's just gonna get, oh, man, my back hurts. I hurt my back. The festival was Jim was top. Yeah, he was talking about a festival. Um, and that would be awesome. I'd love to be a big part of it. Obviously, Jeremy. Well, I guess you guys will see in Jeremy's video um, of the that part, but that that you did hear about that part. Uh, like Jeremy said. Charlotte, North Carolina. Well, if you're ever up there, I'm going to come find you. Lots of us from Minnesota today. Right on. Yeah, Aaron, stay tuned for Jeremy's video. I'm sure he'll he'll inform everybody as to how and what and all that stuff is supposed to happen. The saga that I finished was um. Nine eighty. We're getting to a thousand for sure. Because we have the microphone for the town meeting. The microphone we use for most of the town meetings. I'll try and use it for my videos, but just keep in mind, like, if it dies during a video that um, some of the video might not have a microphone, you know. I tried. I tried to do my best for everybody. But sometimes it's just like Jeremy says, it's it's another thing that can fail. But I will try to um. Try to look. Kerry's going there next month. Yeah, yeah, again, Jeremy, Jeremy's like, um, I don't know exactly how that all that works. I'll let I'll let him explain to you all. But I'm definitely excited for when he does get here. And uh, those two big, giant, grown man childs can uh, have a lot of fun here and film videos. It's going to be fun. But like I said, today's video, Tube Town's got to come down. Um. I'm waiting for nine nine ninety. All right, when we get to a thousand, next super chat, we got one more super chat and one more. Um. Uh, well, we get this for the end, I guess, for a thousand. But then we'll say bye. But but yeah. That that will be the official opening of Tube Town when Jeremy can come. Or no, we'll play. I don't know what we'll do. But so as we wrap this chat up, I know by the time I get done saying this, we'll have a thousand likes. That's what I was going for. Oh, Queen City. There's a super chat in there. Nine nine nine. Uh, I do food truck videos. All right, all right. Man, I love food trucks. For the food truck videos. Oh, sorry, I missed on. But um, yeah, all right, there we are with a thousand likes. I just want to say, um. Whatever I was saying, I forgot. But I do appreciate everybody who jumped on. Um, dealing with the sound issues last night. I know that was a problem for everybody, but. Those who stuck with it, thank you. Those who go back and rewatch on the TVs, I heard it works better. Uh, download the app and or wait until the other video that Jeremy does. Uh, I'm not sure how much better the sound will be with Madam Mayor and uh, Brett, but they'll be, they're going to get their take on it. So that that should be fun. But uh, for the for the most part. Uh, in my opinion, I think the saga. Over there is kind of dwindling out. You know what I mean? And um, the saga of the microphone is no longer, well, for now. But but again, thanks, everybody, for uh, being on there, hanging out uh, on today's random What You Doing Willis live, just to let everybody know what happened. Uh, Tawanda, thanks. Washington State here. Uh, everybody starts saying bye where you're from. Uh, put a one in there if it's your first time commenting. I got one frisbee for one thousand likes. Oh, man, that would be cool if I'd ended like that. So all right, well, everybody say bye for the next minute or so. And then uh, I'm going to get to filming a video because um. Yeah, L R G, peace, my man. Um, I'm just going to do this in my hand for a minute. I'm going to take a drink while I'm doing it. Locust County, Ohio. Kentucky. Better getter. The parade wave. Look, there's no sound. They're not talking. All right, everybody. Uh, once again, what I do, uh, well, What You Doing Willis uh, chat, if you guys weren't here. We wouldn't be here, but being truly is not here, I can't do that. So uh, I guess I'm going to come up with a new one for you guys and then What You Doing Willis at Tube Town.